Good evening, everybody. I will call to order the regular city council meeting, which is being held virtually via WebEx of May 26, 2020, starting at 7:00 PM. I call this meeting to order, and I ask everyone to please unmute your microphones and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Thank you, everybody. Before we move to our open forum, I would like to take a moment of silence tonight for George Floyd in Minneapolis and his family and the community. We know that there's been a lot of pain and anger and unanswered questions with what happened yesterday. And we want to take this moment to acknowledge that there's a lot of hurt and acknowledge what's happening and the impact that it's having on everybody involved locally, but then also the impact that this is having across our country. So if you could please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Analyst Martinez-Govina, do we have anybody submit anything for the forum? For the open forum?
Mayor, we do not have any comments, any emails or calls. And again, as a reminder, the public is welcome to call in or to send an email to participate in the open forum.
Thank you. The next item is the approval of the minutes of the City Council Work Session of May 2020 and the City Council Meeting of May 12, 2020.
Councilmember Waylon, I'll move to approve the minutes.
Councilmember Supple, I'll second.
Thank you. The motion has been made by Councilmember Waylon and seconded by Councilmember Supple. Analyst Martinez-Govina, could you please take the roll call vote?
Mayor Reagan Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Supple.
Aye.
Councilmember Troutman.
Aye.
Councilmember Garcia.
Aye.
Councilmember Waylon.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Thank you. The minutes have been approved. The next item is the approval of the agenda.
Garcia moves it.
Waylon will second.
Thank you. The motion has been made by Councilmember Garcia and seconded by Councilmember Waylon. Analyst Martinez-Govina, could you please take the roll call vote?
Mayor Reagan Gonzalez. Councilmember Supple.
Aye.
Councilmember Troutman.
Aye.
Councilmember Garcia.
Aye.
Councilmember Waylon.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Thank you. The agenda has been approved. The next item is the consent calendar, and that will go to City Manager Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. The consent calendar contains several separate items, which are acted upon by the City Council in one motion. Once the consent calendar has been approved, the individual items and recommended actions have also been approved. No further council action on these items is necessary. On tonight's consent calendar, item A, consider the approval of the Portland Avenue Bicycle and Pedestrian Link Project, including: One, construction cooperative agreement; Number two, limited use permit; and number three, no parking resolution. Item B, consider approval of a request for a new secondhand goods dealer license for GameStop Inc., doing business as GameStop, number 0633, located at 3466 Street West. I submit the consent calendar for your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Go ahead. Supple, second.
Thank you. The consent calendar, the motion has been made by Councilmember Troutman, seconded by Councilmember Supple. Are there questions or comments from council members? Councilmember Supple.
Last year, when I was liaison to the Transportation Commission, I know there was a question about the Portland Avenue Bicycle and Pedestrian Link process, and they had recommended restriping the roundabout at Portland and 66. And it looks to me like those recommendations were followed here. So I was just wondering if staff could talk about that so that it is clear to the public what's going to happen with the restriping. Thank you.
Director Asher.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Supple, yes, it will be a restripe of the Portland and 66 Street Roundabout as part of the project. We're trying to simplify the movements. We were looking at, we have three lane sections approaching from all directions once everything's done. And so it makes sense to make through lanes and right turn lanes where we can. So the left-hand turns would go with the through lane, and the right, it would kind of be a free right. The only leg that we will not be able to do that with is the southbound leg coming from the crosstown, and that's due to the higher volumes. There's more cars going southbound and a lot of left turns to go eastbound. And so we're going to just keep that leg the way that it currently is. But yes, that will happen.
Thank you. Additional comments or questions? Councilmember Waylon.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say, as a biker myself, I'm really excited for this project. Before I moved to Richfield, I was commuting there a lot. Now, we use it to go connect up to the Minnehaha Creek Trails to commute to some meetings. And so this has long been an area that just, it makes sense that there needs to be bike lanes here. I do want to note, for anyone who's looking really closely at the plans, I had to get this clarified myself. There are a couple sections across the bridge and just north and south of the bridge, across 62, where it's not an on-street bike lane. You would get off onto a trail for a little bit. But there will be a bike route through that whole area where you don't need to take up a lane of traffic like you currently do. So I'm really excited about that. I'm also excited, we've been hearing for a long time from pedestrians a desire for safer crosswalks at Portland and 66. So I'm excited we'll be putting in the flashing beacons to alert drivers when pedestrians are crossing. I would love it if we didn't need those, but it certainly is a reminder to drivers to be on the lookout for pedestrians. So I'm excited about this project for a variety of reasons, and wanted to lift those up.
Thank you. Other council questions or comments? I'll say I'm also looking forward to this update as well. Great. The motion has been made and seconded. Analyst Martinez-Govina, could you please take the roll call vote?
Mayor Reagan Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Supple.
Aye.
Councilmember Troutman.
Aye.
Councilmember Garcia.
Aye.
Councilmember Waylon.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Thank you. The consent calendar has been approved. Item number four goes to Councilmember Supple, and I believe that it starts just for everybody on page 60-something. Does anybody have the exact number that it starts?
66.
66.
This item is to consider approval of an ordinance creating an affordable housing trust fund and authorize summary publication of said ordinance. We, at the last meeting, went through the details of all of this. And so I'm going to turn it over to staff if they wanted to give us any other clarifications on it.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Supple and other council members. No, I think we were able to do a little more research. I know Councilmember Waylon had a number of questions, and we provided him with some answers and tried to incorporate those answers into the staff report. You know, maybe what we could do is go to council if any specific questions come up between myself and Housing Manager Julie Urban, we could address those.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions from council on the updates that were made to this item? Councilmember Waylon.
I have, what I recognize is sort of a long comment. I don't know if that is appropriate now or if you're just hoping specifically for questions or...
You can do the comment now.
Okay. So I recognize this is a little bit getting on my soapbox, but you know I care a lot about housing. At the last two council work sessions, all of the council and the HRA have agreed that city funds should be targeted toward the most deeply affordable housing. Multiple of us even said universally, city funds should not be used toward market rate housing. And so now, to me, this feels like a specific decision about how we want to follow through on that. And really, the question that we were discussing last time, and that seems to be before us, is if we want to retain the flexibility to subsidize housing or assist, subsidize the housing for moderate-income households or assist moderate-income households with their housing costs. So I was doing a little bit of research, and with the help of some research from city staff, the median rent in Richfield, which is around $1,000 to $1,100, it's affordable for someone making around 60% AMI, whereas the new market rate units at the Chamberlain are affordable for someone making around 80% AMI. And I think we can get lost in these percentages. It's easy without, I think it's easy to think that a unit that's affordable to someone making 80% AMI has like a 20% subsidy or discount, since it's, 80 is 20% less than 100. But something affordable at 80% AMI, a rental unit, sorry, affordable at 80% AMI is actually a new market rate apartment in Richfield. On the home ownership side, the average sale price for all homes in Richfield sold this past March was $290,000. And admittedly, that's slightly out of reach for a family making 80% AMI. They can afford up to a $285,000 home, and that requires saving up $10,000 for a down payment, which I know is also a huge barrier to people. But what, to me, what that tells me is that our current housing market in Richfield is very different than what's possible at this 120% AMI level that we're considering, that a household earning 120% AMI can afford, without any subsidy, without any help from us, to rent a 2,400-per-month one-bedroom apartment or to purchase a home that's worth more than $400,000. They can do that without our help, not paying more than 30% of their income on their housing, which is the definition of what's affordable. And then on the developer's side, they already make a significant profit building these types of market rate or even luxury housing. And so I guess my question is, the flexibility to use these funds for up to 120% AMI, what is that allowing us to do? Are we trying to help these households rent or buy even more expensive homes than they can get on their own? Are we trying to give developers a further subsidy for these luxury homes so they can make more profit? And so I guess the, and I understand some of the logic, which I'll get to in a second, but I think overall, this goal of keeping flexibility open is somewhat flawed, that flexibility is not a universal good, or we wouldn't say that this fund is only for housing or that it's only for people below 120% AMI. We would just have one general fund for everything the city does and wouldn't have, like... So there's reasons that we limit how funds can get used, because that's how we target them to accomplish what we want them to do. So my thought is that if we still agree on what we talked about at the previous work sessions, that our purpose of putting city funds toward housing is to focus on that most deeply affordable housing for the families in Richfield who are least able to afford it on their own, that I think we do have to question where this is currently written. What I will say, I do know that we have some programs that are good programs, that are worth continuing, that are, one in particular is even grant-funded. So we're getting money to make this happen that serve families up to 115% AMI. And that, if we can, if we run that program through the fund we're creating here today, there's a chance, if the state passes matching funds in the future, which don't exist yet, but there's a chance we could get additional funds, matching funds for that, and then those funds could be used to support other, I mean, the goals I was just talking about. So there is some advantage there. I also know that approving this fund today is urgently important so that we can continue to provide emergency rental assistance money to VEEP, who's serving our neighbors who are hit hardest in this pandemic. But despite those things, I still think it's a mistake to not place at least some limits on funding in that 80 to 120% AMI range. And so if we're not comfortable completely removing it, I guess I would propose one of two things. The option I think would make the most sense would be somewhat, and this was not, I was waiting for an answer from Director Stark and had not given this to him far enough in advance for it to make the staff report. But, so it's not one of the alternatives listed, but I would propose something that is sort of like the inverse of the inclusionary housing policy, where we would have a certain percentage of the money from this fund over, and I'm basing it off of the Inclusionary Housing Fund for the scattered site development that goes off, I can't remember if it is a two- or a three-year period, but that we would create a requirement that over this two or, any given two- or three-year period, 80 or 90% of the money from this fund would be spent on very low or low-income households, so that we keep that flexibility to be doing a little bit of what we're currently doing, but that we ensure that this is still focusing money largely to the areas we've agreed need it the most. So that is my preferred proposal. The alternative that is listed in the packet of simply making it slightly harder to approve for the moderate-income households by requiring a supermajority, I think that is better than nothing. But I still, I guess I am overtly interested in making this more complicated to spend on moderate-income households, because I don't think that that should be easy. I think we would want a situation where it's, it takes convincing everyone. And my original proposal with that was that it would be a supermajority of both the HRA and the council in order to approve this kind of spending. But with that, I'll get off my long soapbox and open it up for reactions from others or thoughts on what you would like to see.
So I guess I'm wondering, Director Stark, if there's kind of any response that you have so I can also better understand
Yeah.
Waylon's perspective.
I think a couple things to keep in mind. What we're talking about here tonight, we're not talking about any specific funds. We're not talking about any specific program. We're not talking about any specific project. So what we're talking about is a tool. And we're trying to give the tool as much utility as we can so that it can be a useful tool in a lot of situations. Each of those situations would come back to you at some point, could would come back to you and to the HRA or to the HRA to see whether this tool is being used properly. So again, we're, because we're operating in a vacuum, because we don't know which programs, which projects would fall into this housing trust fund, we are trying to be as expansive as possible. And that's, from a staff perspective, that's where we're coming from. From a policy perspective, that is totally up to you guys if you want to go in a different direction. We're giving you kind of the practical applications, and you can take that and apply a different policy perspective to it, and that would be fine.
Thank you. Questions or comments from other council members? I had one question in response to Councilmember Waylon and then Director Stark. So when you talk about Director Stark kind of bringing this tool and being able to have it be as flexible as possible versus, again, being more specific and directive with the scope of that, this tool, would that allow us to also kind of leverage how broad the tool is to get additional grants and funding across the board, period? And then we can decide with the policy piece of kind of how to make those decisions? But is it going to give us more or less ability, given those two options of making it more restricted and specific versus broader in soliciting additional funds to leverage?
Yeah. And so, again, we're operating in a little bit of a vacuum. We don't know what the future looks like. There has been talk for at least 18 months about the state legislature having some kind of a matching fund for communities that have a housing trust fund. And the match would be on what is expended from that housing trust fund. And so if we do have programs that benefit people earning 115% of the area median income, which we do, the choice would be we spend money outside of the housing trust fund, because the housing trust fund was made more narrow. So we spend money outside of that, and then we've lost the opportunity to receive matching funds for that, to use for that or for other more affordable, different affordable programs. And that's where we're trying to leave the door open a little bit more than I think Councilmember Waylon is comfortable with.
Thank you. Councilmember Supple.
Before I ask my question, I'm just wondering, I know we're going to have a public hearing in a moment here. Has anybody called in or asked to speak at the public hearing? Because I want to make sure we listen to our residents as well.
Not to my knowledge. I don't know if Housing Manager Urban has heard from anybody, but I have not.
Okay. Then, before we go into the public hearing, I did have one question with regard to the proposals that Councilmember Waylon was making. If we did the proposal with a supermajority, would that affect matching funds in any way?
Only, well, if the particular project didn't receive the supermajority and wasn't funded through the housing fund, then yes.
So to clarify, though, if it received the supermajority and we funded it, we then could still get matching funds?
Correct.
Okay.
Other questions or comments from council members? Okay. So I think we can move to the next part then and do the public hearing.
Okay. Then I'm going to open up the public hearing and ask formally, is there anyone that wishes to speak to the matter? We haven't had anyone call in, just to clarify.
We have not had any calls for the open, or I'm sorry, for the public hearing. If you want to maybe give it 30 seconds, and if you have anything further to discuss, then I will jump in if anybody calls.
Kelly, would you be willing to share the phone number for people to call if they're watching live and want to comment?
Yep. The phone number is 612-861-0651.
Madam Mayor, while we're waiting to see if anyone wants to call in, can I clarify when we eventually do in this matter, do you want to take both parts of it together or as two separate motions? Because I know there's one to approve the ordinance and the other one to adopt a resolution authorizing it. Do you want to take that as one item or two separate?
Is there a city attorney? So we can get guidance on how to do that?
Mayor, we have Attorney Julie Eddington joining us tonight.
Julie, do you recommend we do two separate motions or one for both of the items?
I recommend do separate actions. Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Troutman.
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a question about procedure here when we're recommending. Well, Councilmember Supple, just one of the three options, and then we'll have discussion, and then we'll either recommend, depending on how that vote goes, make a second recommendation or what's the process for the conversation?
Is that for our attorney? Are you asking me?
I'm not sure if that's for you or that's for... And anybody who hasn't participated in the process, I'd welcome it.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Supple, this is Julie Eddington. I suggest that you discuss and you decide if you're going to make an amendment before you make a motion to finalize that or to vote on the matter.
So can I ask if anyone has called in or should we close the public hearing?
We have not had any calls, so I would say that you could move forward with closing the public hearing.
So I will move to close the public hearing. Councilmember Supple.
Garcia, second.
Thank you. The motion to close the public hearing has been made by Councilmember Supple and seconded by Councilmember Garcia. Could you please take the roll call vote? Analyst Martinez-Govina.
Mayor Reagan Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Supple.
Aye.
Councilmember Troutman.
Aye.
Councilmember Garcia.
Aye.
Councilmember Whalen.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Thank you. The public hearing has been closed. Now, we are, now we talk about if there's any, if there's going to be any amendments, correct? Just based on what we got to the next item? Councilmember Whalen.
I'm sorry to put you on the spot here, Director Stark. I should have asked this question earlier. Do you know, based on the three programs that we are considering would be included in this, I believe you had listed that, well, the emergency rental assistance for sure. The Kids at Home Program could be run through here and then that Community Fix-Up Fund. I believe at one point you had mentioned the Down Payment Assistance Program as well. I was, do you have even a rough guess of how, like what percentage the funding that the fix-up fund gets compared to the rest of things? Like if we ran all of those through it, what percent would we be spending on the moderate income households?
I don't have an answer at the ready for you. I'm not sure if Housing Manager Julie Urban would be able to answer that.
Sure, Mayor, members of the council, the fix-up fund, we put in about, HRA funds added about $30,000 annually as a match to money we get through Minnesota Housing. Down Payment Assistance Program, $1,000, right, $115,000. Kids at Home is about $130,000. And the, the rental assistance to VEP at this point were up to $70,000 with a potential 55 additional thousand, 55,000 additional funds.
And Julie, would the Down Payment Assistance Program be something that could potentially be funded through the housing trust fund?
I mean, we could, I think we could put the money in there. It's, that's just a detail thing that Julie Eddington and I need to discuss it. It's federal funds. It never actually sits in our I'm not sure if it's, if it's worth doing. Again, it would be worth doing and questioning if we, there were some matching funds out there. Which that, you know, that's potentially a program too. We could apply to outside funds, other than state funds and argue that, you know, it's a worthwhile program that could be matched and it's through our trust fund. The program regardless, so it's the, the two programs that really need to come through the trust fund are the Kids at Home Program and the Emergency Rental Assistance.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful. Some quick math tells me that that's not including the, the emergency rental assistance since I, I don't know that that will be an ongoing yearly thing. Seems to be more of a pandemic response. But the other three programs, the, the fix-up fund that serves that higher income level is about 11% currently. And I, I guess I'm comfortable with that, but I, I guess my, my thought would be letting it rise above 20% of these funds being spent on, on moderate income households seems to not, not really be in the spirit of the fund. Certainly, I mean, the definition of affordable is unique to each individual. I'm sure Jeff Bezos' house is affordable to him, but I don't know how many people would call it affordable housing. And so I, I guess I would like to formally propose an amendment that would and I should have written actual language for this, but that would pass the existing ordinance as proposed with the stipulation that over any three-year consecutive three-year period, no more than 20% of the funds could be spent on programs serving moderate income households.
Okay. So then we need a second for that amendment. Is there a second for the amendment? I have a question, Director Stark. With that amendment, do you see any type of unintended impact with an amendment like that?
Well, that's the nature. It's hard to see the unintended impacts until they, until they occur. I will tell you that with the inclusionary housing, the percentage we affixed to that for a three-year period, what we've kind of come to learn about that is when we're building a lot of housing units, that's fine. In years where there are fewer housing units built, that might give us some problems just because if there's only, you know, three housing units built in a year, one unit would be 33%. So, you know, in retrospect, I think we would have gone back to that percentage and asked to have it looked at over a five-year period instead of a three-year period because of that issue. But otherwise, you know, it, it, you know, it adds a little bit of administrative time. You know, not much.
Great. I, I don't know if there's other comments or if there's any folks that would like to second that amendment. Oh, Councilmember Supple.
I don't know if we're supposed to be discussing it, if it hasn't been seconded, but my concern is it's, it's almost overly prescriptive and to just write it on the fly. I understand the spirit of it, but I'm a little nervous to do this at the last minute. I'd be more comfortable with a super majority or the original wording.
Councilmember Troutman.
I, I appreciate the, the spirit in which Councilmember Whalen is, is approaching this matter and thoughts and concerns. I, I do feel more comfortable with alternative recommendation number three. And that it puts the, the vote back in our hands and it keeps up, by us, I mean the council. And it keeps, it keeps us accountable to our, to our mission and makes it harder to deviate from our, from our mission. Depending on, you know, where, where the council's at in the future. And I, and if, if staff is, is comfortable with that too, I think that, that's also a, a value. So I would, I would, I would support the option number, number three, if my, my colleagues were interested in that.
Is there any additional comments, Councilmember Garcia?
Yeah, I think I would just support the original language. And I think we've got, I mean, we don't want to, we don't want to box ourselves in, but support the original language and at some other time. And when the need arises, we can do some revisions.
Thank you, Councilmember Garcia. So there is not a second to support the amendment? So do we go back into discussion and discuss if folks are interested in the count, in option number three? And then approve it with the first, the next motion? Is that the way we would do it?
Madam Mayor, yes, that's the proper way to do it.
And who can start?
I just wanted to note somewhere in the conversation, I heard about a super majority for the council and the HRA. Just to be clear, I don't believe that the council would be able to dictate the HRA having to have a super majority. This would only apply to the council.
Thank you.
I would move that we approve an ordinance establishing an affordable housing trust fund with the modification that any funding placed in the trust fund to serve moderate income households be approved by a super majority or four out of five city council members.
Second.
Thank you. The motion has been made, the amendment and the motion has been made by Councilmember Supple. Oh, sorry. This is just the amendment. The amendment has been made by Councilmember Supple and I'm seconded by Councilmember Troutman. Are there council comments or questions? Councilmember Whalen.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I will still support this. I, I, obviously it was not my first choice, but I do think that this is really important work and especially important for the urgency of what's happening with the pandemic and getting more emergency rental assistance funds to VEP. I guess I will say though, that I, this is me officially announcing, I'm, I'm expecting that each of the, the council members follow through on the, the spirit of this, that we when decisions do come up about how we spend our funding on housing, that we continue to prioritize very low and low income households, that we make that the, the priority. I'm, I'm okay with this moving forward as advanced, but I, I will admit that there, things are designed and there's been a habit of, of subsidizing market rate housing. And I, I don't think that's the best use of our funds. I think we have said that in a, in visionary comments, but then when it comes down to specific decisions where that is part of the deal, I, I just hope and expect that we'll, we'll follow through on that value that we've stated on a, a big picture level.
Thank you, Councilmember Whalen. Additional questions or comments from council members? Okay, the motion has been made by Councilmember Supple and seconded by Councilmember Troutman. And to clarify, I, I'm sorry. Attorney Eddington, so you had said that this is now one, right? So it's the original motion with the amendment or is this just for the amendment? Councilmember Supple.
What I moved was a modified amendment. So I think this is like we control with that one modification.
Thank you. Analyst Martinez-Govina, could you please take roll call vote?
Mayor Reagan Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Supple.
Aye.
Councilmember Troutman.
Aye.
Councilmember Garcia.
Aye.
Councilmember Whalen.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Thank you. The motion has been made and approved. Councilmember Supple.
Now that we've approved the ordinance with that modification, I would like to move to adopt a resolution authorizing summary publication of that said ordinance with the modification.
Seconded by Garcia.
The motion has been made by Councilmember Supple and seconded by Councilmember Garcia. Additional comments or questions from council members? Okay, Analyst Martinez-Govina, could you please take the roll call vote?
Mayor Reagan Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Supple.
Aye.
Councilmember Troutman.
Aye.
Councilmember Garcia.
Aye.
Councilmember Whalen.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Thank you. The motion has been approved. Thank you, everybody. Moving on to the next item on the agenda. Item number five is a consideration of a resolution requesting an advance payment in 2020, 2024 municipal state aid, also known as MSA, street funds to collect funds available for, on the completion of eligible past projects. Staff recommends the city council adopt the proposed resolution requesting an advancement of 2020, 2024 MSA allotments to collect funds available from the completion of MSA eligible past projects. These funds would then be available to use to cover other eligible expenditures, including Lindell Avenue reconstruction, SPOT ADA improvements, matching funds from the Portland Avenue Bike Gap Project and other upcoming projects. The maximum amount of MSA funds that Richfield can request is 4 million. The estimated amount of past eligible expenditures exceeds the 4 million. And so staff is recommending the city council request in advance for the maximum allowed. I will pass it on to Director Asher to just give us any more additional information. I know that we did talk about this at a work session quite a while back now, briefly, but if you could just give us a little more context and reminder on this item, that would be great.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. So as the staff report indicated, the municipal or the Minnesota statutes provide the opportunity for municipalities like Richfield to advance their future allotments. And ours is limited to 4 million because we get over a million last year. So it's your last allotment. We got about 1.2 million in construction funds last year. And if you recall from our previous discussions, we did advance our future allocations preparing for 66th Street. So our, our balance right now is still in the negative. It would be with our 2021 allotment that we would finally come back into the positive. There is a forecast that those allotments will be down because of, it's, it's a gas tax funded fund. And so they're projecting there'll be a decrease in our allotments for sure for 2021. But at this moment in time, this, this, our maximum is 4 million based off of our 2020 allotment. There's no risk or penalties or interest with this money. The money is available. So what I'm doing is I'm suggesting we request an advancement opportunity up to 4 million based on projects that have already been delivered, but did not use the MSA funds. They were approved for MSA funding. They did not use them. 76th Street East, we did a joint repair of upwards of a million dollars on 77th Street a few years back. There's some money still available for 66th Street that we have not requested, things like that. I've been able to identify more than 4 millions worth that I think we can access and, and already spent money. So it comes, it's a first come, first served basis, depending on how much money is in the fund. I think if I can get our requests pulled together, I could get this money so that we have it for future projects like match for the Portland Bike Gap, any gap in the Lindell Avenue Reconstruction Funds for 65th Street, even as if we needed to for the underpass, although I'd rather not. But so that's what this is, just to get some money in the bank for us to have on hand and use as needed. I know we have pedestrian improvements and some ADA improvements we'd like to see like that. Questions?
Great. Thank you. Are there questions from council members on the item? Great. Well, I would like to make the motion to adopt the resolution requesting an advancement of 2020 and 2024 municipal state aid street funds.
Councilmember Whalen, second.
Great. The motion has been made by Mayor Reagan Gonzalez and seconded by Councilmember Whalen. Any questions, additional questions or comments from council? All right. Analyst Martinez-Govina, could you please take the roll call vote?
Mayor Reagan Gonzalez.
I, and, and actually I forgot, I did want to say something and I, I forgot to say it. I just want to say, thank you for, for bringing this item up. I, it was on the consent calendar and I asked for it to be pulled because it was a, a very important vote. And I think just another tool that we're using, that staff is using to be financially prudent and find ways to fund the projects that we need to continue funding that have the, the minimum impact on our residents and on our levy and leveraging opportunities where we're completely eligible, we're saving money and we're putting this into the future. If and when we need that support and not having to come back to our rich residents with that. So I, I did forget to say that. Thank you. Thanks.
Mayor Reagan Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Supple.
Aye.
Councilmember Troutman.
Aye.
Councilmember Garcia.
Aye.
Councilmember Whalen.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Thank you. The motion has been approved. The next item is the city manager's report. City Manager Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. So I issued my first city manager's order under the emergency declaration today. I shared it with you in draft form earlier, or I'm sorry, late last week. And it will allow local restaurants to provide temporary outdoor service. We did it by city manager order because we wanted to get it done as quickly as possible to give restaurants the time they need to plan for this so they can open on June 1st when they're allowed to do so under the governor's order. I know that our staff have been working really busy, really, they have been working really quickly to get this done and have been fielding questions from restaurants. And it was definitely a group effort. Director Stark worked on it, as did our fire chief and our police chief, and Jennifer Anderson is the one that's leading the project, so. The state provided guidance on youth athletics last Thursday, and Director Merkel has been in contact with our local youth associations. We have seven. We're finalizing a plan that would require the associations basically to fill out a questionnaire to provide information for us on how that they're going to provide it and be consistent with the governor's order, and then we would be okay to rent the fields to them. It would be reviewed by Director Merkel and Chief Henthorn and likely Jennifer Anderson as well. If we would also be required, our police department would be enforcing the order with youth athletics. Also, the deputy registrar department is looking at a way to open to the public again for motor vehicle services. As you know, they've been doing the lockbox drop-off and then folks have been lining up outside City Hall and using the phone to try and get those services via the lock, the drop box, sorry. And the lines have been almost to Portland and it's been, it's been really difficult for our staff as well because folks are trying to do it by phone and it's not as easy to communicate, to fill out a form. So we've got folks that are getting really anxious and frustrated in the line and then they get to the phone and then our staff are trying to communicate with them and they're frustrated as well. And so we're trying to open it up so we can provide in-person service again. We would do mitigations with all of that. We've gotten, just today, they're installing the Plexiglas to provide a physical barrier. We would have a greeter that would limit six people at a time to the DEP Reg Department. We would still do passports by appointment only. I don't have a definite date on when we would try and open that, but possibly as early as June 1st. The Star Tribune published a really positive article about the equity proclamation that you made at your last council meeting. Also had a lot of really, I felt excellent quotes. So thank you again to Analyst Martinez Gavina for her research and work on that and then also to Communications Manager Neil Rowland for his his efforts to get it published. Finally, we are beginning to get complaints from residents. City, a lot of other cities have had this already. We're getting complaints on both ends of the spectrums about the governor's orders. Some folks are saying, open up, the governor's gone too far, you know, the mitigations are really killing local business. Some of the complaints are, why aren't you doing more, like mandating masks? So I, you know, we can, we cannot do what's less than what the state has issued. So we can't make the restrictions less. We can't not enforce them. That would be legally risky. We, we could do more, but I am very pleased with the way that the city staff has responded. We have really excellent guidance from Bloomington Public Health. A lot of other cities, you know, the county health system is overwhelmed by all of this. So a lot of other cities have to depend on the county, their county public health and they're not getting as good of information or as quickly. We get really excellent information and much more quickly. And so we've been able to put mitigations into place in a way that I feel follows the guidance from the CDC, Minnesota Department of Health, and then Bloomington Public Health. And when it, you know, we're constantly tweaking that based on feedback that we're getting from both staff and from community. And a good example would be the deputy registrars, you know, we're, we tried to do it by Dropbox and we're finding that it's not working for both residents and staff, and so we're tweaking it. So I feel like we've been pretty nimble and flexible and also trying to get things to work for residents in a safe way. So I don't advocate that we go beyond what the governor has issued and I, we legally would be in risky territory if we didn't enforce what they have recommended. So I can take any questions.
Questions or comments from council members? Councilmember Troutman?
This is not a question, but just a big thank you to our city manager and, and our staff, I know, to bring that executive order about in such a short order as a lot of work, but is so impactful for small independent restaurants, especially all our restaurants, but especially folks that are just really on the margin in our day by day. And even if we had to wait a couple of weeks, I think would have impacted them as, as all this has impacted them tremendously. And so I know that and it's one of those things that government can do, the speed is important, but I know how complicated it is because our chief is involved, our fire chief's involved, Chief Keewish and our public safety manager and chief of police and emergency response manager Jay Henthorn and, and Jennifer and Jennifer Anderson and in our public health, they all had to come together and get this work done and probably other people that I'm forgetting. But to do this, and it's a, it's something that, it doesn't cost the city any money. And people are not using the, the stores will not, not be using the parking spaces because the occupancy is at 50%. So it just, it's a great idea, but it's a great idea well executed, which is the best kind of idea. So I just want to say thank you to all our staff that, that turned this around so quickly.
Thank you, Councilmember Troutman. Other council members? No, good. And I'd just like to do a short and sweet thank you to our staff. I agree with City Manager Rodrigo that our staff have been doing an excellent job in our response. And I appreciate you making those clarifications because as you know, because you're getting the calls as well, we are also getting the calls on both ends of the spectrum. And taking the time to explain that is really helpful. So again, thank you to the, I mean, I, I think about the DEP Reg folks and I see those lines and I know that it is really stressful and very difficult. So I hope that we continue to find those ways that it can be less stressful on staff and functional for community and that we all continue to do the best we can to navigate this, but our staff is absolutely doing an exceptional job in their response. Okay, we will move to claims and payroll. Councilmember Garcia?
Mayor, I will move claims and payroll.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Claims and payroll has been moved by Councilmember Garcia and seconded by Councilmember Troutman. Analyst Martinez Gavina, could you please take the roll call vote?
Mayor Reagan Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Supple?
Aye.
Councilmember Troutman?
Aye.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Wayland?
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Thank you. Claims and payroll has been approved. The next item is hats off to hometown hits and we'll start with Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Well, there's just two things that I wanted to mention and one of them I think is just really, it's just such a putting Richfield on the map and that is with Dr. Mark Jenkins being included in the National Academy of Sciences. And some of the members are just prestigious and we all, they're in our history books, Albert Einstein, Jonas Salk, Stephen Hawking. I want to say that, you know, Dr. Jenkins has been, has been on the board of the, of the school board. And I really appreciate the fact that, you know, he really knows, he's the definition of perseverance. I mean, he has really been extremely dedicated and extremely, just, it just makes me proud, you know, because I think it's such a prestigious award and, you know, and that, and something that we should, I would like to have Dr. Jenkins come to the council meeting later on when we do go back to our normal council setting and that we have him and we really maybe have some, some cake and coffee or something because, you know, he really deserves the accolades that he's getting and I think we're sure to all be very, very proud of him. That, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Councilmember Garcia, for that. Councilmember Wayland?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things. First of all, I wanted to wish Eid Mubarak to our Muslim neighbors. I know it's been a hard, hard Ramadan this year, not being able to meet in person, but wanted to hope that you found meaningful ways to connect with, with friends, neighbors, family members, and, and were able to celebrate that from home. Also wanted to lift up probably a more popular member of Richfield than any of us, the Woodlake Boardwalk is back. So if you are a Boardwalk fan and have been missing that for, believe, at least a year, if not more, it is back up, it is open. You can go check it out. It's now ADA accessible, so if you weren't able to enjoy it before, hopefully you can now. But I wanted to lift that up and then also just remind people that our recreation department has done a great job pivoting very quickly after needing to cancel many of the usual programs they have, that their virtual programs are already up and going. Some of them are just short and sweet videos and they have more extensive programming, but if you are looking for something to do this summer, would encourage you to check out all that they've put together.
Thank you, Councilmember Wayland. Councilmember Supple?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to lift up someone that we've talked about here before. Omar McMillan was in the running feature of the year and he's now made it to the final round, so he's in the top. So I just want to do a shout out to Mr. McMillan. He teaches fourth grade here at the STEM School and he's also the RHS basketball coach. And we all know him as the guy that's always talking about we over me and building capacity and building up our community. And so we're very, very proud that he's made it to the top 10 and we're looking forward to the years to come because we just really are glad to have him here in the community and working with our youth. And then I also wanted to echo what Councilmember Wayland said about Dr. Jenkins. I have worked with him in the past and he is all about community and he is always thinking about what's best for Richfield and he's one of these people that's always working behind the scenes. And so I think it's really cool that he's finally getting the accolades publicly now for all of the great work he's been doing. So I would support anything we could do to honor him. Third, I wanted to thank the members of the Board of the Honorable Veterans Memorial. They put together a virtual program to honor those that have died in service of their country and it was a very moving program. And I know those are all volunteers and they're working hard and I would just want to thank them. And then I think we've mentioned this before, but Public Works Director and City Engineer Kristen Asher has been honored nationally as one of the top 10 leaders in public works. And last week, we honored both Director Asher and her entire department. And there were a lot of like vignettes that were put out on Facebook about what the members of the department do. And so I want to say thank you to the entire department, to Director Asher, and also to the communications department for sharing what the Public Works Department is doing. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Supple. Councilmember Troutman?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't think I have any original hats off here at, at the end, but just a couple of things that I'll mention. I appreciate Councilmember Wayland talking about the reintroduction of the floating bridge. That, it's so amazing how frequently our parks are being used. And appreciate everybody who's using masks and, you know, moving over to the side and keeping social distances throughout our parks. But having that, that floating bridge restored to the park is just, it's the heart of, of the park. And so for folks that haven't been out yet or have been and walk it all the time, it's back and we're really excited about that. We also were having a conversation at the, the Friends of Woodlake Board this last week and, and it came to our attention that a lot of people don't know they can be members of the Friends of Woodlake and we're going to have a membership drive coming up. But if you're out there, if you're walking, if you appreciate that, that floating bridge, just like Gary Ickton used to say on NPR, if you, if you like it, if you appreciate it, put a value on it. Yeah, you can become a member. So expect, expect the member pitches coming, coming shortly. It's a heck of a deal. And also to Coach Omar, we're, we're super proud of him. Super excited for the honor that he received and that's the, the second teacher in almost as many years. Another one of Councilmember Supple's colleagues, TJ Statham, classmate of mine from the class of 99, was similarly honored as a finalist. And so hats off to all our teachers, including and especially Councilmember Supple and Coach Omar. And, and then, and then finally, I did want to say again, I was, I was honored to be able to encourage and congratulate Director Asher in the, in the Public Works facility, but wanted to do that publicly here too. You're an incredible leader and and you, every time I talk to you, I'm so impressed by how focused you are on your staff and leading your staff and motivating your staff and just you, your, your focus on your team just, just reflects in the amazing team that you've you, you produced and you continue to lead and your, your leadership here, and I didn't take the opportunity to say this. I appreciate you and Director Chris Regis being so prudent with, and having, just even having our local government, government aid as a resource that we can dig into for projects like this and really stewarding our resources. So we have a city that when we look a generation from now and two generations from now, we're going to be really proud of and we're proud of it today and we're proud of you today, Director Asher. So thank you so much, friend.
Thank you, Councilmember Troutman. I also, everyone has already reviewed the things that I wanted to share, but again, we're obviously very clearly fortunate to have so many exceptional leaders in our community. That has always been the case with Richfield. That is why we are this amazing community that we are today is because of the work and the collaboration and leadership and foresight of generations of exceptional leaders. And this is just a tiny little glimpse of that. And, you know, it was great to see, I was going to bring up the Honoring All Veterans Memorial and the great group of volunteers and the amazing veterans that we have in our community. And how the group was able to pivot very quickly and put a program online. It's on YouTube, it's on our city website, it's on social media. If you just look up or search Honoring All Veterans Memorial Richfield, you'll find the video very easily. So please take time to, to review that and thank you to the staff and all the volunteers who helped make the program, put it virtual. And then I absolutely also wanted to congratulate our Director of Public Works, Kristen Asher. She's absolutely amazing. We are so lucky to have her. And I got to spend also a little time with her last week to celebrate her and her exceptional departments, so many of which
So many of which have family, grew up in Richfield, but of course, like everyone on our city staff, really have Richfield's best interest in mind. But it was just great to get to know her a little bit better and, and hear her perspective and how it's been to work in Richfield and that, you know, again, helps me be a better leader as well. So thank you for all you do, Director Asher. We are very proud to have you. So just so many bright spots in our community in a time where we are all struggling in ways that we never imagined. So we're, we're very lucky. And with that, we have, we're, come to the end of our meeting and I will adjourn our city council meeting. And we will see you all next meeting, everyone. Thank you.